Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step up to the podium and request permission. And I'll introduce the board up here. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a member. Next to him, on my closer right is Scott Peterson. On my direct right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy, the chair. James Morse is absent tonight. He is ill. He is the vice chair. This is Tony Petrucci to my left, an associate member, and Nick Hahn, our newest associate member. Then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on each application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a discussion. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicants or applicant representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. You should come up to the podium. You state your name and your address for the record. And please speak into that mic that's right over there for the FCTV viewers. And any person seeking to make a public statement tonight on anything that's not on our agenda before the board tonight shall have two minutes to speak, but the board will not comment. It's just if you have a comment about anything else that's not on our agenda. And that's what we have. Does anyone have a public comment tonight? So we'll begin. Our first case is a continuation for Sullivan, 06-224 Sullivan. They've requested a continuance. Do you have that file with you?
Zero.
Zero, no rows. Yeah.
So we do have an email from attorney Clower, who is representing the applicant.
Okay.
When he stated he was unable to attend the hearing tonight and requested a continuance to a future date. So we are proposing to continue to October 10.
October 10. Okay, I'll need a motion and a second.
Motion to continue to October 10. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our first hearing, new hearing, is 077-24. And we'll let the clerk take over.
This is hearing on application 7724 from Jean M. Pagani and Abby M. Lammers, 30 Foster Road, East Falmouth, Mass. They've applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-11.4A1I of Dakota Falmouth to construct a detached workshop in the front yard located more than 50 feet from the front property line. The subject property is 30 Foster Road in East Falmouth. We have referrals from the various departments. We have engineering has sent a referral in. They're concerned about stormwater runoff, a dry well for roof runoff, and erosion control. The board of health has noted that it needs, that the property may need a pump and a septic line for the workshop. They have to check with the board of health about that. Conservation has advised us that they have issued a negative request for determination of applicability. The water department says that there has to be work. We'll need independent water service for the accessory structure, and the meter should be inside. Fire department has no comment. Planning board has no comment. And the building department has no comment. We also have, in this particular case, a number of letters received. They seem to all be from abutters in the neighborhood. I'm not going to read them individually because they all kind of focus on the same themes. They're concerned about the designation by the building commissioner of the front yard, the size of the structure, the proposed use of the structure, the impact on the neighborhood, and the impact on traffic. And we also received, just a few minutes ago, this large pile of papers from attorney Kenefik, which I don't think anybody here has had a chance to read. But I'm sorry, I'm not going to tell you what's in it because we haven't read it. But maybe attorney Kenefik can tell us when he speaks.
Thank you. And who do we have here?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Take it away.
I'm Lancey, representing Lancey Construction for the applicants. I'm accompanied by Brian Foley, lead designer for Lancey Construction. What I'd like to tell you about the proposed project is 30 Foster Road will consist of a new front yard accessory structure, proposed to be 22 feet by 36 feet, two-story, 792 feet per floor. The site contains 28,911 square feet, which I think is very important. It's .66 of an acre. And it's a corner lot at the corner of Foster Road and Paznicoy. Currently, there exists a 4,300-square-foot home with a deck that has a front setback of 59 feet from Foster Road. The new front yard accessory structure will have a setback from Paznicoy, excuse me, from Foster Road of 50.5 feet, which is over the required minimum that we are applying for tonight. The side yard from Paznicoy will be 10 and 1/2 feet and will comply with the 10-foot sideline setback that is required. The site is located in a flood zone AE12. Regarding any habitable space, it needs to be above elevation 13 feet or higher. We plan to accommodate that height. The new accessory structure will have two levels. One, a storage level at grade with 792 square feet within the floodplain. And one habitable level that's going to have conditioned space on the second floor that will consist of a finished workshop and a powder room, excuse me, and a mechanical storage room. There will be an interior stairway to the habitable space from inside the storage level. All new accessory structure details will match the existing house that is there. It's a contemporary design. The new accessory structure powder room will tie into the existing septic system for the board of health requirement. There is a new ejector pump unit that will then tie into the existing system. There are no new bedrooms planned, so we plan no changes to the existing Title V system other than connecting. The accessory building will contain a gutter and downspout system that will tie into a brand-new dry well, and that is also shown on the enclosed site plan. As your clerk mentioned, DPW has asked that we provide a 1-inch water main separate to the new building and have the meter in conditioned space. We will do that. The workshop is planned for the homeowner's personal use with no commercial use of any time, of any kind. One of our homeowners, Abby, is a noted painter. She went to college and trained for that and is a noted painter nationwide. She has paintings in a number of galleries from Missouri all the way to Gloucester. In applying for this tonight, the building commissioner has designated Foster Road as the primary front yard. As I indicated, it's a corner lot, so the primary front road is Foster Road, which is extremely important. We have a driveway that comes in from Paznicoy as it's a corner lot. Lot coverage is important. As I told you, we had a 28,911-square-foot lot. Our existing lot coverage is 14.5%. Our proposed lot coverage with the new structure is 17.3. So as you can understand, we don't need any requests for variances because we believe we conform to all of the setback requirements and are just simply coming in from the front road. The proposed height of the structure will be 21 feet 8 inches, which will be below the 22-foot maximum that is allowed. Moving along, telling you a little bit about Foster Road. There are six house lots that front on Foster Road. They all happen to be corner lots, just like the subject property. So in going along Foster Road, number four, number eight, number 14, number 30, and number 32 all front Foster Road. But all five of those parcels are corner lots, just like the subject property. There is one across the street from the subject. It's 29 Paznicoy, but its southern lot line is on Foster, and they use Foster Road for their driveway. Today, I received late, and I'd like to read this into the record. I have a copy for the board members, if I may. Madam Jim? Okay, this is a letter from Abby Lammers, who has owned the property with her associate Jean Pagani since 2002. So they've been residents of Falmouth for over 22 years. To him would make concern, "I am a fine arts painter and have painted most of my adult life. It's what I do. It's my passion. In my request to build a studio workshop on my property, I'm simply looking to create a quiet space from which I continue to work on my craft. A studio space ends up requiring more space than one could think and will be used for performing numerous tasks. Open space in a studio is important specifically for creating paintings. To that end, an area for easels and pallets set up needs to be 6 feet by 6 feet square. I'm working on a still life another at 4 by 4, which is helpful. Wall space for photographing the work to supply images for new work to the galleries and to add to my website requires at least a 4-foot by 8-foot area to set up the proper lighting and a camera with a tripod. Framing is another part of being a painter, which requires a clean table, tabletop space, and a few tools. This will most likely happen in the lower floor of the proposed building. Storage is also a big priority, primarily for storing unsold paintings. I have four racks measuring 4 feet by 28 feet. More storage is needed for supplies, canvas, wood panels, paint, sketchbooks, and drawing paper. Then there are still the objects and reference books. I started making furniture over the past five years on a fluke. Initially, I got into making my own frames in the hopes to cut some of my costs because of my sales were lacking. In the past five years, I have sold zero pieces of furniture. I've opted to use them in my home, and I've given several away to friends and family. The majority of the furniture I make is from reclaimed wood, which I scavenge myself. Given that point, there will be no material transport issues regarding furniture-making materials. These materials will be stored in the lower level of the building. Again, more need for storage. Furniture making is creating something for beautiful from someone else's garbage. It's just fun. I have no intention of selling from this space, nor do I intend to host any exhibits or teach any group classes. It is for my personal space. Lastly, it's disappointing that none of my neighbors took the time to reach out and talk with me about their concerns." Lastly, you'll probably read in some of the notes you got from neighbors, "There's no habitable space for living. There's going to be no bedrooms. There are four bedrooms in the main house. It is sufficient for their domicile as it is. This is simply going to be an accessory structure and a workspace." That pretty much concludes what I have to say. Brian's going to tell you a little bit about the building.
Hi, thank you, Brian Foley. I worked with Abby and Jean on the design of the studio. Just wanted to make a couple notes and points specifically to the abutters' letter that we perceived this afternoon and just talk about the design a little bit. Firstly, the location of the building. It was described in the attorney's letter as being 10 feet off the street, which I agree is too close on Paznicoy. I completely agree with that. It's actually 28 feet 3 and 1/2 inches from the street. And I'll pull up that diagram now on a site plan. Just a moment. Here we go. Oh, that's not it. Here, sorry, it's kind of hard for me to see. Hey, can you move the book for a second?
Yeah. There's more. So you can look at it.
Okay, this is fine. Thank you. All right, so you can see in the survey stamped by a civil engineer, edge of traveled way. That is the dirt road that is Paznicoy. That is what people travel by foot or car. Then you can see the green line is the edge of the trees. We are maintaining as much screening as possible, and it's a full 17, 17 feet 7 and 1/2 inches to the property line, then another 10 foot 6 to the building. So I'm going to pull up another diagram here. It shows a comparison to the property across the street, which they reference, which is 29 Paznicoy. So that gray strip in the middle is Paznicoy, the traveled way, the actual dirt path. It's walkable. And then 29 Paznicoy here is 29 feet from the edge of the road, and our structure is 28 feet 3 and 1/2 inches. Very comparable. And if it were 10 feet, I would totally agree that just subjectively it's too close to the road. But the structure is not 10 feet from the road. It's 28 3 and 1/2 inches. Just wanted to be very clear about that. And I'll just quickly go over the design of the building. Let's see here. View set. So the structure itself is, it is somewhat modern. It's informed by a few things. Number one, it's in the floodplain. We have to start any habitable conditioned space at about 6 feet above the ground, no matter what. An accessory structure is limited to 22 feet in height, so we have that amount of space to work with. A shed roof works with their house architecturally and gives her enough functional space within the studio. The things that we do have direct control over, we use all regionally sensitive materials like cedar shingles. We're using white-framed windows, nothing massive or crazy or out of character. Any doors will be custom wood doors that are very in line with the characteristics of other Cape Cod residential buildings in the area. We did aim the low side of the roof towards Foster and entry to Paznicoy to somewhat mitigate the massing as much as we could with respect to her needs for the building. And aside from that, it's purely function. It's just two little conditioned spaces. Almost a third of it is mechanical room and just enough space for her to paint, for her personal use. Let's see. And there was other descriptions of it being a 1,600-square-foot house, and that's not quite accurate. It's 792 square feet in footprint and the same amount in livable conditioned space on the second floor. It's well under the 30% of the main structure allowable as defined by the zoning rules. Pop back to my folder here. Here's a, sorry, this is difficult to navigate. Just a moment. This is taken from the GIS map from Falmouth, just showing the distance. This is using their own measuring tools from the edge of the traveled way to the front door of 29 Paznicoy, 29 feet, very comparable to what we're proposing. And I also just wanted to say, we're very open to discuss with neighbors and answer questions at any time. I think there's a lot of misconceptions in this narrative in the abutter letter, and I understand that. A lot of it's abstract, and I would agree with a lot of this if it were the case. So we're an open book and happen to chat with neighbors at any time. We looked at many, many designs and placements for this house. Abby is an extremely sensitive, compassionate person, and we did consider neighbors both on Foster and Paznicoy. And, you know, this is where we landed, and this is what we'd like to move forward with.
Okay. We'll start with questions from up here. Mark, you want to start off?
You've got something here that's 1,533 square feet.
That's both floors added together.
I understand. I did the math. You have 43 neighbors in opposition. From what I can see, not one in favor. Now, that's enough for the moment. We'll just let it go through. I'm sure I'll have something more to say later or ask.
Well, as Frank mentioned, it seems like we have a lot of documents that just came in today, so I believe we'll wind up in a continuation at the very least. But I must admit, it is somewhat confusing. And in your testimony, you started off by saying you're 10, 10 and 1/2 feet off of the property line. And for me, as an individual walking down that area, that was one of the first things I said. I said, "Why are they putting this so close to the abutters when they have additional space?" So that, your measurements that you came up with tonight, still to me is somewhat confusing, but we can get through that. Obviously, it's going to have to be conditioned as a workshop. There's no additional bedrooms and things like that. But there's a lot for us to pour through here from what the abutters have outlined. So I don't have any further questions other than the fact that during the time of this continuation, I hope that the developer, the owner, and the abutters could maybe get together and chat because, you know, the applicant, I think, has the onus to chat with the abutters. The abutters shouldn't have potentially found out about this through word of mouth or whatever else. So I believe that the applicant should have been the one reaching out, not necessarily the others. Thank you.
Do you have any questions yet?
Yeah, I would just like something clarified. Mr. Foley, you mentioned that the property is, the structure would be 28 feet from the edge of the traveled way, but we're not really concerned with that. We're more interested in how far it is from the lot line. Now, on that plan that you showed...
10 and 1/2 feet from the side setback.
It's 10 and 1/2 feet from the sideline?
Yeah, there was obviously some pushback about what we're calling the side and the front in the attorney, the attorney in abutters' letter. It's 30 Foster Road. We have gotten the designation from the building department, signed off by Gary Street, that Foster Road is the front, Paznicoy is the side.
I saw that. Now, so in order to build this structure, you're going to have to do some clear cutting. You're going to have to cut down a number of trees, right? This is a fairly densely vegetated area. I went out there and I've taken a look at it twice, actually, but how deep of a vegetative barrier is it going to be between the edge of the traveled way and the building?
It shouldn't go beyond the property line. That's more than enough to do the limited foundation work we have to do. We probably need a boundary of 5 feet off the building perimeter, so it'd be 23 feet from the edge of the clearing, from the edge of the road, the traveled way.
So it'd be 23 feet from the edge of the traveled way to the clearing?
That would be the limit of the dig, yeah. We may, we want to preserve screening there. We do. They like it. Jean and Abby, they have no desire to clear cut. Anything we remove would just be a necessity from doing the foundation.
It is important to note that in any road layout, road layouts are probably about 40 feet, and you'll find that never is the 40 feet actually cleared. A lot of times, if it's a paved road, you have about 22 to 24 feet of paving, and the rest of it is buffers that are usually where the utility lines are, water lines are, electric lines are, that sort of thing. So that's how we ended up telling you about, we're really 28 feet from where the traveled way is to where this building is going to begin.
I'm familiar with that because in this town, at least half of the people have their lawns in the public way.
True. I do, too.
Yeah, well, I do, too, so that's why. I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, if you're going down Paznicoy, either in your car or walking or riding your bicycle, what are you going to see when you look in the direction? Are you going to see the building or are you going to see some vegetation screening it?
You'll see the original vegetation that we have no right to touch that is in the road layout.
Okay.
So the property line, as Brian says, begins probably 17 feet from the edge of the traveled way. We have no right to cut that. We will not be cutting that. We will then begin, once we enter the property and get into our setback area, and then after the building is constructed, the owners plan to landscape and do some screening there so that you'll have some enhanced screening in addition to the natural screening that we won't touch.
All right, thank you. For now, that's all I have.
Tony?
Thank you. I'm a little confused, and I just wanted to clarify this. When I look at the plans, I'm seeing on the height, I'm seeing 21 feet 8 and 1/2 inches. Then I see another measurement that says 22 feet, and I see height max 29 feet 9 and 5/8ths. I mean, I generally can read plans relatively well, but...
Yeah, any time, well, I design in the floodplain, it's all above sea level, so you'll see that at ground, it's at like 7 feet something. That's the height above sea level.
What I, what I think this board needs to know is, what is the maximum height? It's 22 feet.
Yep.
We know that. What is the height of this building? And what I'm seeing on this plan is going from the slab up...
Yeah, 21 feet 8 and 1/2 inches.
So that, that's going to be a certified engineer's stamp on this saying, don't see. So there will be a certified engineer's stamp on the site plan or an architect's stamp on this that says it's 21 feet 8 and 1/2.
Yes, sir.
Typically, what we do during construction in order to achieve that goal, when the building is framed, a lot of times we'll ask the engineer to come out to shoot that elevation just to make sure that we've achieved that 21.8 because there's no sense in letting the framers leave the site if they've gone over that height.
And this board, and this board often requires that to be done. So thank you very much. The other thing I want to try and clear away here is that, what, why does this floor space, the habitable floor space, not qualify as a bedroom under Title V's definition, which is what the town uses for a bedroom? Why does this not qualify for Title V? It meets everything that Title V defines a bedroom.
Well, the board of health talks about 70 square feet.
Yes.
That's, that's what they think. That's the strict interpretation.
That is what they use.
Right. You will note, there's no bathing in this building. So it's a toilet and a sink and a work sink for washing paint supplies and that sort of thing. There's a lot of big windows so that the homeowner can paint. We expect you to put in your decision that this is not to be used as a bedroom. We fully intend to record that as a deed restriction with the property. So that going forward, anyone who buys this property understands that this property is subject to your decision of no additional bedrooms.
And I, I'm sure one more question. If I'm correct, you can't exceed 30% of the primary structures on the, on the square footage. You're at now 35.39%. If I take, if I take the square footage of the building, again, I always thought I could read plans, but this one's a little bit confusing. It appears to me, and you clarify this, that you're at 35.39 and the max is 30%. you're at thirty-five point three-nine, and the max is thirty percent.
Thirty-six point four.
Or thirty-six point four, whichever one you want to believe. But it's more than thirty percent.
Which, which number are you using?
So if you take the square footage of the building...
Yeah, the four thousand, yeah.
The house is four thousand two-twenty-one, right? Four thousand two-twenty-one, I think?
I think the assessors call it four thousand three-three-two.
Three-two.
Yeah, well, I just took that off the property card. So...
So that's thirteen hundred square feet in thirty.
If I'm correct, though, it's, and my math may be off.
Our building's seven ninety-two.
No, your building is fifteen hundred.
Fifteen ninety-three.
Fifteen ninety-three. So you are over, your total square footage is over.
My understanding was it was taken from the footprint.
No.
Both floors stacked on top of each other. Then wouldn't that only be, that would be habitable space, which the bottom floor is not habitable?
And the way it reads, it doesn't, and then, and I'm perfectly going to be wrong here. The way it reads is it does not define it the way you just defined it. I'm reading it purely from the language that's there. And you've got fifteen hundred and thirty-three square feet, I think it is. You're at thirty-five point, well, whatever, thirty-five point three-nine percent.
Thirty-six point four.
And I'm just reading it the way, as nearly as I can.
If that is the case, we'll obviously amend it to meet the thirty percent if it is in fact calculated.
That would severely bring that, well, not severely, that would certainly bring it down considerably. Anyway, let me just point that out to you as I have.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that. Madam Chair, I have no other questions.
Can I further comment on that?
Sure.
Okay. Lot coverage. Lot coverage is always what is on the ground. That's always the way the engineers provide that to us. Second floors don't apply. You can go up two-and-a-half floors, all they're interested in, and when this board goes over twenty-five percent lot coverage, you're looking at what's actually touching the ground, in a lot of cases, what's giving a shadow, or staircases, or that sort of thing. What's above doesn't come into lot coverage at all.
This isn't lot coverage.
Two different things.
Lot coverage is not an issue here.
We're talking about thirty percent of the forty-two...
Thirty percent of the principal residential, principal structure.
For the floor area, which is the first floor, is what we understand.
If you are correct there, you wouldn't be giving us the forty-two oh-four number, because it's a two-story house.
It's a two-story house.
I mean, you're mixing apples and oranges and throwing in a turnip.
Well, maybe addressing that will, will address some of the other issues then, when we come to a compromise.
Oh, two forty-nine point six A gross floor area. That's what I'm reading from. You guys figure it out from there.
We'll address, thank you.
Nick, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions.
Did she reach out to the neighbors before this was filed?
Not everybody, a few neighbors, yes. I don't know exactly who at this time.
We really encourage that. When you're changing the neighborhood like this...
Yeah.
We encourage it, and it didn't sound like it went too well, from what I'm reading, anyway.
Certainly.
I'll just go one more.
Go for it.
I mean, if this is an artist's studio, light's important. You would think that the windows, the majority of the windows, the bank of the windows, would be facing east or south, instead of...
For painting, northern light is best. That's why they're facing that way. Yeah.
And again, and then, I mean, the largest part of the building is right out there and grabs you.
Again, it's to bring that northern light in. It's a painting studio exclusively, and northern light is ideal for her type of oil painting.
Skylights are nice, too.
You good, Mark?
I'm good.
Go ahead, Tony.
I'm sorry, one more question. Your testimony was that, or the letter, which is put into testimony here, is that there are no sales. This is not a home occupation. So my question is, since the artist is selling her paintings, where do those sales take place?
For comparison, I believe she sold seven paintings in the last year. Maybe it was a little more than that, which is, is good, and it's typical for her level of fine art painting. And if she sold them, I'm sure it'd be by all different means, mail, delivery, maybe one or two come and meet with her. But it's not a, it's not a day-to-day gallery with like, open hours or anything like that. It's exclusively...
So, so you're not, so the description of a home occupation is that you're doing business from your home, and you're not applying for a home occupation?
She's practicing her profession, but she's not doing business from her home. There's not a, there's no exchanges happening in the space. It's like a computer programmer working from their bedroom. It's not, there's no one coming to meet her there to review the work. She's not even displaying it there.
When you get to the letters, one of the neighbors did cite her website, abbylammers.com. So I also went to that website as well, along to see what it looked like. Up comes a lot of her beautiful paintings, and it also talks about the three galleries that she has exhibited her paintings for sale. One's in Missouri, one's in Kansas City, and one's in Gloucester. There's no mention of even Falmouth at all, or on Cape Cod. So it sounds like she is quite remote from this location. And I must remind you that she's been painting inside her house since she's lived there, and there's been no problem. Her paintings have gone off-premise to the galleries, or to buyers, wherever they are, and there's been no adverse conditions from this home. The home has been added on since they bought it in two thousand and two. They've applied for building permits, and have tried to comply with all applicable zoning laws that the town of Falmouth has.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions before we go to the public? You guys all set, before we go to the public?
Would it be in our best interest to possibly just seek a continuance and maybe, maybe have more of a dialogue with the abutters?
I think these people absolutely have the right to speak tonight.
Of course, yeah.
There'd be two things we could do. We could pin down that, that square footage, so that we're absolutely certain of that for the board, and then we can hear from our neighbors...
Yeah.
And see if, if we can show them what we're planning, and hear what their concerns are, and maybe there's some comments.
It's great for you to hear concern.
Yeah. So if we could ask for a continuance, please?
Afterwards.
We're going to have one, but we'll do it later.
Thank you.
So now we'll hear from the public. I don't know who wants to, you coming up first?
Sure.
Okay.
I think so.
Oh, okay.
So, well, he's got a folder.
Yeah.
So it's right here. So that's, that's his...
Okay.
He said you need to access him.
I was looking, I wanted to reference one of the, actually, two of the...
Go for fifteen minutes.
Yeah, so, yeah. He's speaking for a lot of people.
That road.
The folder's here, it's on the desktop, so it's not going anywhere.
So those items that were shown will be submitted to the record?
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, right there. Yep. Okay. My name is Michael Kenefick. I'm an attorney at Moriarty, Beal &amp; Malloy. I'm representing Ken and Marshall Liebler, twenty-three Foster Road, Richard and Noreen Ackerman of twenty-five Foster Road, Carol McKinnon of fifteen Paskinoy Lane, and John and Aaron Butterworth of twenty-nine Paskinoy, no, Paskinoy Lane. They're all abutters, direct abutters within three hundred feet, as it's defined by forty-eighth section eleven. They also signed some of the petitions that you have before you, along with, I believe, another forty neighbors in the neighborhood, that all have submitted written materials opposing this project. There are a few things I want to discuss that were brought up in the, in the initial presentation. The first is here. The seventeen feet of land, as Mr. Duffy had brought up, is actually part of...
Excuse me, you have to go back, so that...
Is actually part of Paskinoy Lane. It's not Abbey Lammers' property, or Gene Picani's property. They are leaving only ten feet of space between their building and their property line for screening, and they admitted tonight that ten feet certainly isn't enough area to screen this building. That seventeen feet that they seem to be relying on is part of the way. It can be cleared out. All of the neighbors and the, the property owners and neighbors in the neighborhood could at any point widen that roadway, but now, in order to do so, they would have to remove the screening that Abby is forcing them to maintain, to not have to look at her building every day. So I think that's a very important point. They cannot rely on vegetation on the way. They need to, or they, they should be obligated to provide screening on their actual lot. Another point I wanted to bring up, there was a question about if Abby or Gene had spoken with any of the neighbors, and they said, "Well, maybe there were a few." That's untrue. One of the neighbors, a few of the neighbors had noticed that there were some stakes put in the property on that southwest corner of the lot. One neighbor asked one of the property owners what was going on, and she said, "Oh, you know, I think Abby is just going to do a little bit of a studio." Kind of passing comment. They never communicate with any of the neighbors. This was quite a surprise to everybody. And actually, a lot of the neighbors reside out of state, and they'd only contacted me a few days ago, because some of their notices went to their Florida residence, or residence somewhere else. So as of a few days ago, nobody in the neighborhood even knew what was going on. So they were all kind of shocked about these developments, and kind of shocked about learning that this massive building was being proposed ten feet away from the road. So I'm going to try to pull up some of these photos. I wanted to take a look at, actually, I'm, before I do that, let me see if I can find the plan. Which one's the plan?
Right here.
Right here? Put it on your resume. Give me a sec, okay. Oh, I meant the...
Just scroll up. You want the site plan?
Yeah, yeah.
It should be like...
Okay. Okay, perfect. All right, so this is, this is the, the plan, as everybody is aware. The, the building here, well, this part of the building was built in nineteen sixty-seven. This three-stall garage was also built in nineteen sixty-seven. In two thousand and twenty-one, the property's owners added this section here, which connected the, the old house, or the existing house at the time, and the three-story garage. When the house was built in nineteen sixty-seven, the front door faced Paskinoy Lane. When they expanded in two thousand and twenty-one, they expanded the facade of the building, again, facing Paskinoy Lane. The driveway, as you can see, runs from this section here, down to Paskinoy Lane. When they did the addition, they widened the driveway area. Now, what they're trying to rely on here is, they said that they've designated Foster Road as their front yard. That is a complete fiction. They have never used Foster Road as their front yard. And I'm going to pull up some photographs in a moment to show you exactly what it looks like on the ground. But essentially, what they're doing is, they're seeking to, they're seeking a finding from the board, that Foster Road is their front yard, and that this is their side yard, so that they can build a building ten feet away from Paskinoy Lane. I want to pull up a few photos here. Hold on one second. Here's a photo. I took this on Friday. It was a rainy day. Kind of took this in a studio version to try to get a vision of the corner. So what you see here is, this is Paskinoy Lane, and this is Foster Road. This is a shot, this is a photo, or actually, let's start somewhere else. Okay, so, right here, what you see here, this is Foster Road, this is Paskinoy Lane. To the right here, you can see the applicant's driveway. Here's a photo taken by me standing on Paskinoy Lane, down their driveway. As you can see, the front yard, the garage is here, the front driveway is here, and the driveway leading to the road. Now, I want to show you the Foster side of the property. So this is what they are claiming or arguing is their front yard. As you can see, there's a fence there. It's been there for quite a while, because it's old wood. There's no access to Foster Road. There's no driveway. You can never get a car onto that side of the, the property. There's only this one opening, as you can see, I mean, you can walk through it to get across the street to head over to the beach, but that is the extent of access from, between Foster Road and the, what they are claiming is their front yard. There's another opening, photo of the opening. So it runs the entire length of their property line that abuts Foster Road. This is another photo of their driveway, taken from Paskinoy Lane. And this is the corner, another photo of the corner, taken, I don't know if you can see there, but the stakes are there, you can see them, possibly. They were easier to see on the ground than they are in this photo. Now, I understand that the board is probably looking to continue the hearing. I can get into an analysis of the law. I don't know if you want to hear about that tonight, or if you have any questions for me first, or just want, just have questions for me, and we can talk about the actual bylaw at the next meeting.
Anybody have questions up here yet? Tony?
May I?
Go for it.
Just help me to understand exactly what, so your argument right now is the front yard should not be designated on Foster. And why shouldn't it be designated on Foster?
It's, I mean, it, there's no, nobody can make a genuine and honest argument that Foster, the Foster Road side of their property is being used as their, their front yard. As you can see, the, the front door is on Paskinoy, the driveway goes to Paskinoy, the Foster side of the property, there's no door, other than there's a deck, there's a couple of screen doors that lead onto the deck. I think what happened, what, in reality, what they're trying to achieve here is, they don't want to put the building on the Foster side of the property, because it's going to obstruct their view of the ocean. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about. Instead, they want to put it on the Paskinoy side of the road, so everyone else can look at it, because they don't want to.
Are you familiar with, yes, I know you're familiar with the bylaw here...
Yeah.
...in town? Because this also confused me, which is why I'm asking you. All right? Now, in this town, in definitions, there's a little gem that says that the building commissioner may designate the primary front yard for the purpose of maintaining a front yard setback. I have no idea what that means. I guess I do, but I don't. A front yard not designated as a primary front yard may maintain a side or rear yard setback. So my question was to our zoning department, well, how does the building commissioner gauge what is a front yard or not? Because there's no guidance, or at least I can't find any guidance.
don't want to put the building on the Foster side of the property because it's going to obstruct their view of the ocean. I mean, that's, that's what this is all about. Instead, they want to put it on the Paskenoy side of the road so everyone else can look at it because they don't want to.
Are you familiar with, yes, I know you're familiar with the bylaw here.
Yeah.
In town. Because this also confused me, which is why I'm asking you. All right. Now, in this town, in definitions, there's a little gem that says that the building commissioner may designate the primary front yard for the purpose of maintaining a front yard setback. I have no idea what that means. I guess I do, but I don't. A front yard not designated as a primary front yard may maintain a side or rear yard setback. So my question was to our zoning department, well, how does the building commissioner gauge what is a front yard or not? Because there's no guidance, or at least I can't find any guidance. But, so when you talk about what's a front yard and what's a side yard, and how did the building commissioner who created the front yard decide to get there, you're going to have to look, at least I'm looking on page 23. And I guess understand how our building commissioner designated that in his letter of, and you must have seen that letter.
I, no, I have not.
Well, there is a letter that the building commissioner, I believe, put out. Am I correct?
Yeah, you did.
That, that, and I think it's important for you, if you're going to make this argument.
July 25.
July 25. So I think it's important, if you're going to make this argument, to understand how, I'm not saying I'm agreeing or disagreeing with you. Because I'm confused, frankly, about, but look on page 23 of the, of the bylaw. Under Yard Front. And evidently, that's how he, our building commissioner did that. So I, I'm just pointing that out to you because that, that's the argument. This is the argument about why this building shouldn't be where it is. That's all I'm trying to point out.
Well, I, I, I understand that. I wasn't aware of the letter. It wasn't part of the materials that I found online. But your bylaws also say that they need a special permit to put a building in their front yard at all. You can say no. So you don't, you're not bound by whatever the building determine, building inspector determined as far as the front yard. You could say, hey, listen, I understand that he believes that this is the front yard, but we still nevertheless think that this is inappropriate location and we're not going to issue a special permit. You can say no. I'm not aware of the letter. I would, I would very much like to see that.
You can see that. Would you, would you make the argument to this board that based on what our bylaws state, that this would be substantially more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood? Could you make that argument?
Oh, yes. And I, I have it in our materials, a, a very long explanation. I mean, what, one of the, one of the, I made two, two arguments. I addressed your front yard bylaw, the one that states that an accessory structure can go in the front yard, but they need a special permit from this board. You have a town meeting vote that passed that bylaw at some point by two-thirds vote. So you have an overwhelming endorsement and acknowledgement from this town, from the town meeting, that accessory buildings in the front yard are essentially unsightly. And we'll allow them, but they have to be at least 50 feet away from the road. And you would need a special permit so that the zoning board can put in all kinds of conditions to try to lessen how unsightly this building could be. Then you have your, your also, your special permit bylaw, which goes to the detriment in the neighborhood and everything else. And, I mean, I think the pictures tell the story themselves. This is an old community that was built out in nine, in the early 1900s. It used, it used to be called Davisville. There's a plan in the materials that I submitted. I can't remember which exhibit it is or whatever. But for over 100 years, this community has been nothing but small residential lots. They're non-conforming lots at this point. There are no buildings and, there are no accessory buildings in the front yard of any of these lots, other than small sheds, which all appear to me, looking at the GIS images, to be mostly exempt from zoning. Small, small sheds, ones that you can roll around the yard if you want, if you wanted to move them. There's nothing even close to 1,500 square foot, two-story building, 10 feet away from any of the laneways, roadways in the, in this community. The roads are still dirt roads. As we already discussed, they have never been built out. This is designed and generations have intentionally kept this as a quaint community. This building is not quaint. It will stick out like a sore thumb and it will be an eyesore, especially to the people that live in, in the immediate area. And this is a great point here. That's, that, I took that photo from the Butterworth's front porch. So when they, when they open their door, the first step that they take out of their door, they're going to see this building that is going to be almost as high as this tree line. These are scrub pines. They're not, they're not tall trees. And then a lot of these trees are going to be removed, or would be removed if this is allowed, to accommodate the construction. So they're going to walk out of their front door and they're going to be overwhelmed by the sight of this building. Getting back to the detriment, I mean, I can't find, I couldn't think of anything more detrimental to the community than having to walk out your front door and being overwhelmed by the sight of, what is it, also, it's a contemporary kind of design in a neighborhood full of keep card design homes. So I think that's, that's, that's another consideration. You have criteria to follow, you know, some go to visual, visual character, I kind of already addressed that. Some go to traffic. One of the issues we have here, and I adjust this in our memo, is, let's see if I can pull it up. So, Paskenoy Lane, Foster Road. So Foster Road here passes by the applicant's property. And then when you take, you can take a right to get to Menahawke Beach. It's a beach access. This is a heavily traveled road. A lot of children on bicycles, a lot of children on feet, walking down here, taking this left turn to go to the beach. This building will be 10 feet away from their property line. That is going to block the sight line. As of right now, I've walked this property and I think many of you have, you can see through these trees. I mean, I, I know it's a, it's a patch of woods, but you can see through them. And this is still foliage, you know, these are, these trees are. If this building goes up 10 feet away from Paskenoy Lane, it's going to start interfering with sight lines. And it will be, it will pose a danger. I mean, it, it's also vehicular traffic as well, but a, a lot of foot traffic, especially during the summer here. If it was located in a more appropriate spot, that danger is eliminated. Again, they could have put, they could have proposed to put this somewhere on the Foster Road side of their property, but they chose not to because, like I said, apparently they don't want to look at it, they'd rather have the, the neighbors look at it. I don't know if I have anything else. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Mr. Keneffek. You're basically asking us to, or you're presenting us with an appeal of the building commissioner's determination that Foster Road is the main street. Are you aware of any limit on the time you have to make that determination? Because it was about three, two months ago, July 25th, that the building commissioner made that determination. And I know that under zoning, there are certain limits on the time you can appeal the decision of the building commissioner. So if you don't know the answer right now, you might present it to us when you come back. Or if you have anything to say tonight, be fine, I'd like to hear it.
Well, yeah, I'm aware of the, the appeal period under 48. I, I was not aware of the decision of the building commissioner until 15, 20 minutes ago.
It was July 25th. And Noreen can get you a copy. It's a one-page letter. It's very simple, but it's, doesn't have a lot of detail in it, but that's the date that we're working on. It was the 25th of July.
Okay. And again, as I mentioned earlier, even if there was a determination, you still can say, listen, this is not an appropriate location and just say no.
Okay.
Scott or Mark, you guys?
Just again, continue, you got, you got to talk to the applicant and all the butters. I mean, when I look at this site, if you were to be successful and get the front yard, the front yard definition changed, I don't see why that the applicant wouldn't just physically slide it down, Foster Road. And I think you would have just as many issues for people that have lived there all their life. So again, please, talk to the applicant and hopefully everybody can get their arms around this. But it's unfortunate that we're already in this spot to start, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Mark, you all set?
Yeah, I want to hear from the neighbors that are here.
Anybody else from the, you, you're all set, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else from the neighborhood want to come up? Come on up. We need your name and address, please.
Sorry about this.
Can you forward us a copy of those photos for our?
Yeah, I can. They're also in the exhibits.
Richard Ackerman. I live at, my wife and I live at 25 Foster Road. We are diagonally across from the property in question. I just want to address a couple of remarks that were made. There's no neighborhood feud. This is not one of those situations where the neighbors are feuding and there's a problem. We get along. I like these ladies. They have never mentioned what was involved here, other than to say, well, we're going to have a garage. To others have been told, we're going to, Abby builds, makes furniture. But when I hear that Abby is a compassionate person and she really cares about people, are we to go to her and say, tell us what you're, what you're demanding? Tell us what you're proposing? Tell us what, what you want to do? That's, that's the reverse of what should happen. I didn't know anything about this until six days ago. So I think it's pretty cheeky to say they should have come to us and we'll do whatever they want. Let's have a continuance and let's talk about it. To me, that's not the way things are supposed to work if you want to have a neighborly situation, which the board seems to be concerned with. And it's interesting that Abby said that she did painting and then recently she decided to make furniture. Once you have a, a use, a workshop use, how can you limit what it would, could become? How can you limit what a workshop could become? The dictionary different, definition of a workshop is a place where things, where manufacturing is carried on. Merriam-Webster, a place where manufacturing is carried on. Now, that seems to me to be a very broad definition. Manufacturing could be anything. Today, it might be furniture, it might be painting. Tomorrow, it might be rebuilding computers, might be a little machine shop. How do you monitor and police what's going to happen in that, in that location? And what could happen in the future? We know that people don't always own their property forever. People don't live forever. But we know that real estate does live forever and the zoning that's attached to the real estate continues as long as the real estate exists. So the changes here would really be permanent. And what I really wanted to say was, I love the neighborhood. I've lived there for 20 years. What's so great about the neighborhood? There's no, no business use, there's no commercial uses. People live in that neighborhood because they enjoy life. It's quiet, it's relaxing, you walk to the beach. We have dirt roads. Imagine, you want to put paved roads down? Uh-uh, the neighbors wouldn't have it. We have potholes to maintain the dirt roads. The potholes aren't very pleasant, but we don't want vehicular traffic, not wanted. Foot traffic, wanted. So when I heard about this proposal a few days ago, I said, well, what is, does it make sense? First, that structure, that building, we could have a nice legal argument about whether it's the square footage on the floor or what do you do with the two, two stories? And I, I appreciate that. If you walked around that neighborhood and got to that, past Nikoi Lane and looked at that building, you'd say, what, how did that get here? That building doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. Even if that building sat idle and there were nothing to, to be done in that building for a year, you would still say it does, it's out of character with the neighborhood. It's somehow, there's an intangible change when you put in a building that really is designed for commercial use. Whether you say you sell your paintings or not, you can never monitor that and sanction somebody from selling. Maybe no intent today to do that. But the proposal is not just to have an idle building, the proposal is to have a building which is a workshop. And a workshop sounds quaint, a little workshop. This is not a work, a little workshop. This is a, a, a building with amenities that homes have, a toilet, running water, and whatever. When the home is steps away where there's toilets and running water. So for a, a place that's just going to be a modest place that nobody should care about, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood, why all this mystery, number one? And why all these amenities? What is the need for this proposal? It will negatively impact the enjoyment that we have right now. Because if you have manufacturing use, you're going to have machinery, you're going to have noise. What if there's an electric saw? I mean, I'm not a mechanic or a mechanical person, but there's a lot of machinery that would be acceptable and we would, might find out is in that building. And noise travels quickly in that area. It's a quiet area. With all due respect, I think that if the board denied this appeal, there would be no civic good lost. There would be no hardship imposed upon the property owners. They would continue to own and enjoy their property as they have for many, many years. They're not, they, she's, she gets along fine, apparently, now. I understand she has a place elsewhere off the property that she does her work, but it doesn't matter. According to the testimony, she paints now in the house. Whatever she wants to do, she does in the house. She has multiple, big, big garage area to do that. But if you make this change, I do think it's a permanent and a negative change that is going to affect not only people here tonight, but all of the neighborhood and generations of people, youngsters, the children, the grandchildren, or the owners right now, who will never be able to enjoy the property and the neighborhood the way we have been able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? Do you want to rebut anything quickly?
Probably just quick comments.
Just quick. Oh, wait, wait, time. Come on up. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I will be brief. My name is Michelle Lawton. I live at 541 Menahawke Road. I am a direct abutter. And my husband and I received a letter approximately a week, 10, seven days ago, eight, eight days ago, stating that they wanted to erect a shed on their front yard. And so Rick and I said, you know, I don't know why they would want a shed. They have this huge detached garage, huge house, but we, like, it's, you know, that's fine. Only to learn later that what is described, described this evening is nowhere near a shed. And I concur with you that we've been there for 16 years, January 29th. It's very quiet, we love it. We walk to the beach, we take our, my son's dog for a walk, we take our kids for, you know, our friends' grandchildren for walks. And just, it doesn't belong there. So I can't talk to the zoning laws or the setbacks or all of those other things, but just being honest. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. One more. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Carol McKinnon. I'm 83 years old. I've lived in the neighborhood of this property for 52 years. I think you read my letter. Because my house that I own and one of my adult daughters has brought her children up when they were infants, right up until 15, one's 15 years old now. And my house is 1,320 square feet, that's all. This house is, or I, I say house, this structure is larger than the house that I own on Paskenoy. And yet, my house has two dogs and a whole family of five. I, I just don't get it. And the other thing I wanted to say is, the house at 29 Paskenoy Lane is my son's house. There he is, and his wife. And, um, they've been there for as long as Jean and Abby have been there. And their house looks right at this structure. But theirs is a home. And maybe their setback is 10 and a half feet. That I'm not sure about, but, um, this gentleman was saying what it was. And that's a home. That's their home. And they're looking at something that is not a home. It is a, um, a building. It's an art studio. But I'm the person that Jean's, uh, I met Jean. I was walking along the dirt roads and I met her about a month ago. And I said, hey, what's going on here in this neighborhood? As I said, I've been here forever. And she said, oh, I'm just, we're going to build a little, a place for Abby to make furniture. I well know that Abby is an artist. And I believe she's from Missouri. And she was living there recently and only has come back to Falmouth, maybe, I bet, maybe within the last year. So it makes sense for her to have a, a arts, uh, her artwork on sale in a studio or what, or what, gallery, put it that way, where she's from and where she has been living. And she also had a studio, I believe, in Mashpee. A lot of artists do rent space or have an art studio. And maybe it's a good idea to have one where you can actually sell your work. I really don't know. But forgive me for taking so long. But I am sincerely upset about this for the neighborhood because I brought my family up there. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Last call. Come on up.
Well, we've certainly heard the comments and we appreciate the feedback, uh, the concern of the boards. What we tried to do was comply with all the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth, which is get the building commissioner's determination to be over 10 feet from the side lot line and comply with the accessory structure. So we'll review the location on the site. We'll review those calculations as well. And if we could get a continuance, so we can do those deliberations and come back to the board with some information.
And talk to the abutters.
And talk to the abutters, sir.
Thank you.
Continuation? We just got it, October 24.
Move continue to October 24.
You all set for October 24?
That's great.
Thank you.
I, what was the, um, abutters attorney?
Mr. Kanefick.
Are you all set for October 24?
Yes.
Perfect. I'll take a motion from anybody.
Here, motion 24th of October.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of continuing, October 24th at 6:00, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. That folder's, that folder's going to get big quick.
All right, so let's get, we get this one out of the way. There was, um...
One down. Thank you.
What are we going to do with?
357.
357. I keep saying 375. I don't know why I got the numbers mixed up.
Did you, Mark, did you walk that property?
Yeah, it's...
I couldn't find anything there either. Except all that, the fencing, the orange fencing's all around the place. What's that for?
And they mixed...
They went to Concon.
Mixed apples and oranges there, um, because it appears that some of the stakes are holding the fence up.
Yeah.
The lot, one of the corners in the back, busted over and it's in the, um, erosion control. Been there since, it's a little creepy. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, let's move along here. We now have 357 West Falmouth Highway. Frank?
Okay. The number 357 West Falmouth Highway. This is application. Can we have some quiet over there, please?
Do you have a USB?
I do not. I was hoping to pull it from the website.
All right, this is application 8024 Benjamin T. Carroll, 35 Riverside Terrace, Northeast Tunne, Massachusetts. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 10.2A of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming single-family structure. It's a dwelling. Uh, subject property is number 357 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have comments from engineering. They're concerned about stormwater, um, and infiltration system for roof runoff. The Board of Health says there has to be a septic system for a four-bedroom house and the office that they noted on the plans cannot be a bedroom. Conservation on October 11, 2022, um, issued an approval of proposed changes. They also are requiring a clamshell driveway. Water suggests, the water department suggests a possible upgrade and a new curb stop with a meter in the basement. And there are no letters, least on record that I have seen.
And an approval from the store.
Oh, right, excuse me. The historical commission did, this is in historic district. The historic commission did approve. And they noted the location of the house is closer to the street than the zoning bylaw. And they said, given the circumstances, it's appropriate.
Thank you. My name is Ben Carroll. I'm the owner and the applicant of 357.
Nicely, we're going to start up.
We all went there and, uh, in your, in your application package, there's, uh, staking requirements and by no means are they met there. I, I found one corner stake and it went through the, uh, erosion, uh, control. It's, appears that it's been there for years. And then the houses, uh, the stakes on the house are much smaller than we like, but, uh, only about half of them are there.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Nothing on the front corners or, uh, it's just not staked properly.
Okay.
And we require it. And I, I tried to figure it out. And some of the stakes are actually mixed in and holding up the orange, uh, um, snow fence, which I have no idea what it's there for, to keep the animals in. I have no clue. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's not staked properly as required. So I...
We continue when it's not staked properly.
Okay.
I think the stakes were from Concon. They looked about two years old to me.
Well, there's, there's house corner stakes, but they're a couple of years old.
So there, many are missing. If, if I can just address that very briefly. The actual border of the lot itself was staked by a professional land surveyor probably about a year and a half ago. We've gone through a couple iterations through conservation. The house itself was staked by, the, the proposed layout was staked by myself and my builder. It was not staked by a professional land surveyor. I did see that in the packet. I was under, I wasn't under the, the impression that it had to be done by our surveyor until I saw that in the packet. And I couldn't coordinate a surveyor to come out and stake that home. Additionally, the state of disrepair that the house is in makes it complex to show exactly where the layouts are. So, and I don't know how the board would approach this, but what I'm really trying to do right now is to obtain a permit to demolish the structure. And, uh, we've been through conservation. I know I can address a staff comment about changes to the plan. But we've been through conservation for the demolition. We've been through historic for the demolition. If we demolish the structure about halfway through a process with the building department right now for the demo, if we demolish the structure as it sits, it's my understanding that that would potentially have an impact on our ability to reconstruct. So, understanding that I may not have complied to the board's desired standard for how the staking of the front house should be, would it be at all possible to move forward with a hearing potentially on just the demolition aspect of this home?
I don't think so.
I don't think we're concerned with that.
I mean, it's right on the application in red lettering, as a matter of fact, some of the... I mean, we have to go there and walk the property and, and, uh... It's just not possible.
We just can't let one person...
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the problem for you is that when you demo the structure without an approval in place, you've effectively lost your grandfather.
Correct.
So there's, there's not a way for the board to sort of split that up and give you permission to demo other than if, you know, you were going to be totally in compliance, but...
I won't be.
Yeah.
And there's also, the way the, the house is set up in the lot is overgrown to the extent that it is. I, I don't believe there's a way for me to stake it to the standards set out in the application where you want each individual corner in setbacks. I could, I could have my surveyor stake, put stakes in the ground and write out two corner of back of house. But as the building currently sits...
They all have got machetes in their trucks.
Well, do, do, may I? On the, um, front left corner, which would be in the existing building, the, um, and for the back, couldn't he do, uh, an offset stake?
Yeah.
Saying X number of feet to corner?
That's, that's what he just said.
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You used a much better word, offset stake.
I, I apologize.
Okay.
I think that's...
But there's no corners. I mean, it's, it's just not staked.
And I, I'll have a surveyor go out. If, if the board will give me a continuance, I'll have a surveyor go up right now in the next meeting. I apologize for the confusion there.
Oh, I guess just to add to, why not have it fully 25 feet back from the road? Why, why did you need to bring it forward to where you were effectively only 16 feet?
Conservation resources in the back.
And his, and historical asks you to keep it where it's located too.
So historical was somewhat concerned about having something 35 feet back from the road, which because it's on 28A, it's my understanding that the appropriate setback would be 35 feet.
Right.
And given pretty much, I actually don't think that there's a house within a half a mile in either direction that would be 35 feet back within the West Falmouth Historic District specifically.
Okay.
That's not true. There's one on the hill that's definitely 35 feet back.
There's a couple.
Yeah.
But most of them are really, I live right, not, for, not too far away.
Yeah, I, I understood the, the conforming aspect and I did read Concon. But again, it was just, for me, for road noise and everything else, I'd prefer to push it back and you have a sizable, not personal. But that being said, let's hope we can get this thing going. You're doing the right thing from my perspective.
Thank you.
To Mark's point, unfortunately, we have to abide by the regulations that we put on everybody. We've got to get it staked out properly.
I don't think it's going to take a long time for this, so I don't know if there's any...
Well, he's got to get it staked, right?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So were there any other items that the board was looking for since the applicant's...
Yeah, those little stakes. I mean, especially if you're going to be doing, um, demolition in there. I mean, they snap so easy. I mean, we like the one-inch square.
I'll have a professional surveyor stake it between now and then.
That's all they use.
And before we continue, we should probably hear from the public? Anybody from the public here on this particular? Good. So just, that, we have to, this is the game plan.
I understand.
Yeah.
Motion to continue.
Uh, October 24.
October 24 again.
Motion to continue till October 24.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you.
Sorry, Paul, Tom.
No, I, I apologize.
All right, moving along. Ten Melrose. Ten Melrose. Take it away, Frank.
Let me find the file here. No, it was the file hitting, hitting the microphone. Uh, this is application 8124 Michael R. and Patricia L. Torre, trustees for Otis Street, Framingham, Massachusetts. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for modification of special permit 90-79 and 69-23 pursuant to sections 240-10.2A of the Code of Falmouth to allow modifications of previously approved plans. Property is 10 Melrose Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts. We have, uh, referral comments from various departments. Engineering, uh, as usual, is concerned about stormwater, uh, dry wells for roof runoff and erosion control. The Board of Health has noted that there are no new bedrooms, um, in basement and loft. And so the, the septic must be for a four-bedroom, uh, house. The water department has a question about a sleeve on an existing service. I'm not really quite sure of that, what that's about, but, uh, you can look at their referral. The planning board has no comment. Fire department has no comment. And we have no letters of opposition or no letters, no comments. Let's put it that way.
No letters, period.
No letters.
There we go.
All right.
Take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Anthony Sakkalos and I'm an attorney at Amenclower LLP, law firm here in town. I'm here representing Michael and Patricia Torre, the owners of 10 Melrose Avenue, who seek permission to modify two existing special permits applicable to the existing non-conforming structure on their property. Uh, Michael and Patricia are here tonight and, uh, we are also joined by Henry Arnado. They are architects of HPA Design Incorporated. Uh, this matter was last before the board in September of 2023, uh, when a different set of plans were approved. Those plans were purchased as part of a design-build process and didn't allow the applicants to have control over the design. Uh, they've since parted ways with their former builder. They've hired Henry and, uh, these plans reflect changes that the applicants wanted but couldn't make with the older plan set. The subject property is located within the residential C zoning district. It's not in any overlay districts. Uh, it's on the western side of Falmouth Heights at the corner of Melrose Ave and Tower House Road, uh, and is 6,312 square feet in terms of lot area. There is currently a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling on the site with an existing footprint of 1,798 square feet, uh, which is non-conforming as the lot coverage by structures being at 28.5% currently, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25% by special permit. Uh, front yard setback is also non-conforming and is currently, uh, 21.9 feet, where 25 feet is required. Uh, the applicants are proposing changes to the prior approved plans that increase the amount of habitable space and modify the existing decks. This proposal will improve the existing non-conforming front yard setback, uh, from 21.9 feet down to 24 feet, uh, while maintaining the side yard setback to the south at 11.8 feet. And would also slightly improve lot coverage by structures, uh, from 28.5% down to 28.1% or, uh, 1798 square feet down to 1771 square feet. The home will continue to have only three bedrooms. The existing office in the basement is not a bedroom because it does not have a code compliant Means of Egress. Uh, the loft in the attic is also not intended to be a bedroom. It's open space designed to serve as access to the balconies. Uh, the interior stairwell is open on all levels, including on the second floor and in the attic. Uh, the proposed ridge height is 34 feet and 3/8 of an inch, uh, which is under the 35-foot maximum building height allowed. Uh, the applicant's proposal requires modifying exist, pardon me, existing special permits in accordance with, uh, section 240, 10.2A as to non-conforming structures, which provides that the pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended, altered or changed only by special permit, so long as such change, extension or alterations not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Uh, to make that determination, the board must consider the review criteria of section 240, 12.1E, whether, uh, including whether the alterations will create any new, uh, dimensional non-conformities and pair views and vistas and impacts to the visual character of the neighborhood. In this case, there are no new nor, non-conformities created and the existing non-conformities are all improved or have remained the same, but generally improved. The residential C district requires a special permit where lot coverage by structures exceeds 20% under section 11.3A4. Uh, the board will need to consider the size and height of the proposed structure in relation to the neighborhood, uh, the effect of shadow and impacts on views and vistas from public ways and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. This structure is above the average gross floor area of the neighborhood. However, this will clearly not be the largest house in the area and it is in character with the other houses in the neighborhood. Lot coverage by structures will be brought down a bit, again, from the existing 28.5% down to 28.1% and otherwise remains in character with the other homes in the neighborhood. Uh, there's no increase regarding the impacts of nitrogen because the number of bedrooms will remain unchanged at three. Uh, with respect to impacts on views and vistas, I would say that such impacts are minimal, if any, given the character of the nearby homes, considering the particular location of the structure, and that the structure will not exceed the zoning district's 35-foot height limitation. The proposed ridge height, it's light, it's higher than its current elevation. Uh, however, no views are likely to be obscured and the existing exterior deck, uh, will be reduced. Again, in terms of setbacks, the present non-conforming setback to Tower House Road would become less non-conforming by increasing from 21.9 feet down to 24 feet. Side yard setback to the south remains at 11.8 feet. Uh, in closing, I strongly believe that the board can and should approve the application to modify the existing special permits because the project is a vast improvement over the existing condition and meets the requirements of section 248, 10.2A. existing condition and meets the requirements of section 248 10.2A. The applicant's proposal will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, will improve the existing setback non-conformities, and will reduce lot coverages and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Great, thanks. Mark, this is your neck of the woods. You want to start off?
Well, just one obvious observation, the address here is 8 Melrose, but you're claiming Tower House Road to be the front yard.
That's 10 Melrose.
10, well, 10 Melrose, but you're, you're saying that the front yard is on Tower House Road. That's where your 24 feet is. Your.
Oh, did I, if I, I apologize if I misspoke.
Yeah, I mean, you're down here, your, your front yard is 16, eight, 16.8 actually. And so it's just, you obviously misspoke.
Apologies for that, sir.
But no, I remember this one before. I really don't have any major objections. You're pushing it right to the 35 feet. We're obviously going to have to ask for an ASBIL, but you know, we okayed the last one and should get the house they want, I guess.
I appreciate that, sir. It is close to the 35-foot limitation, but it's, it's about a foot under it, so we're hoping we're not.
It says 35.
35 is the maximum.
No, it says, says 30. Where the hell.
Yeah, I think it says 35 on the end, which.
You just said 34 because I wrote it down.
Yeah, it's 34 and.
Three eighths.
Three eighths of an inch, that's correct. So it's about a foot.
Where did I see 35?
It says 35 on the architectural plans, just to show the maximum height limitation. Right next to it, I believe, it says 34 and three eighths of an inch.
Oh, proposed, okay, all right, sorry. Yeah.
No worries at all.
That's, okay, threw me on the front yard thing though. But no, other than that, I have no issues.
Again, just wanted for the, for the history here, no bedroom changes, we're staying at three.
That's correct.
The basement level will be finished, but it'll be an office.
That's correct.
I'm good, thank you.
Actually, just, the last time we were here, we had video of the house below it with the water flowing in through the window. Have you, in this proposal, have you added any additional?
There are, there are three dry wells here that are going to be installed and they're going to be tied into the, the downspout, so all the roof runoff is going to be running through those. It should substantially help the situation. We know that it's on a hill and there's a lot of, you know, stormwater that's coming down from, from higher up and.
Yeah, a berm on that road would be nice.
Yeah.
But it's not there. If it was mine, I'd put the old rubber holes across the driveway at the front, but it's not mine. But I was wondering if you did any different grading or whatever to try to address that further because I certainly do feel for the neighbors. That was some pretty impressive video that they brought.
Hmm. To my knowledge, there hasn't been anything like that that's done, but we do believe that these three new dry wells are going to substantially mitigate.
Yeah, and most of the water is coming from across the street.
Likely the case, yes.
Can I clarify something?
Certainly.
Have to come up.
We need you to name and address to it, please.
Michael Torre, I'm the owner, 10 Melrose. So just to clarify, last year when that issue did arise, the, the town actually put in a dry well on the, right next door on the adjacent property in front of lot zero that.
Catch basin.
Yeah, it's a catch basin, yeah, yeah. So.
Did that have a positive effect?
I, I, we haven't heard any issues since and, you know, I have every intent to try to.
You can see it when it rains. It runs across the street.
Yeah, yeah, that, the Sullivan property is actually the low point. The, the road in front of the Sullivan property is actually the low point in the neighborhood or at least in the immediate area. So the water does travel right through there, but, but yeah, we have every intent to, to keep our stormwater on our property and, and be able to get caught in the dry wells, so.
Great, thank you. Frank, do you have any questions?
No.
I just have one quick one. How are we going to make sure the attic doesn't turn into a bedroom? What's the door?
It's, it's not going to have any privacy. I believe it's going to remain open.
Remain open?
Yes.
And the basement, is that, it got a wide door too?
The basement's going to remain open as well, I believe, yes.
Perfect, that's all I have. Tony?
I, I have no questions. It's a wonderful design, fits in beautifully. There is that brand new grandstand they put in front of number 10 where the little garage is, so really you're very nicely designed, beautifully designed property.
Thank you very much, sir.
Nick?
Thank you.
Don't forget you're voting on this one, Tony. Anybody from the audience? Come on up, we need you to name and address.
My name is Marilyn McMillan and I live at 5 Melrose, across the street uphill from the Torres. And I'm speaking tonight in favor of the project. I think, as you've said, it's a beautiful design, it's a great use of the lot, and I'm glad to be able to speak in support.
That's great, thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Mark Harmson. I'm the owner of 4 Melrose, just to the, the south. In fact, this property used to be in our family and it was our garage back in the, some time ago. I have no concerns, I just had one question. I'm, I'm really happy they're continuing with the traditional Cape Cod design. I think that fits very nicely with the neighborhood and have no concerns. I just had one question. I know the roof is going to go up to 34 plus feet. What is it now? Do you know what it is now?
Yeah, the roof is, yeah, come to the mic.
Yeah. I believe that the current ridge height is 24 feet, four and a half inches right now.
So it's going up nine feet?
I believe it's.
It's about 10.
10, yeah. It will be 10 feet. I have no, I have other no concerns and I'm, I'm pleased with the design.
Great, good to hear. Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions up here?
No.
Who's voting on this one? Who's voting on this?
You are. Next, next, yeah. I, I would love to have a motion to close.
You got it.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
And now I'll take, thank you.
Motion to approve of conditions?
Second.
And we have a motion to approve of conditions in a second. Any further discussion or, we're all set?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Great, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Findings?
Findings. We have to finish our job.
You have not done yet.
Thank you, Noreen, for waking me up.
Properties, tell them 10 Melrose Avenue, it's in an RC zoning district. What's going on over here?
Just me.
All right, they were talking, I thought there was more. Is there more testimony?
No.
No, okay. It's 10 Melrose Avenue, it's in an RC zoning district. This is a petition to modify special permits 90-79 and 69-23, which were previously approved by this board. It's in a windblown debris district, but no floodplank, floodplain. The street frontage is on Melrose Avenue and it's 95.24 feet where 100 is required. The current square footage of the lot is 6,312 square feet where 40,000 is required. The street is a public right of way. The lot coverage by structure will be 28.1% where the limit is 20, so it is non-conforming, but it's with our approval. The lot coverage by structure, parking, and pavement will be 35%. The limit is 40%, so that's by special permit. The non-conformities are the setbacks, particularly the front, front Tower Hill Road is 21.9 and Melrose is 17.9. The others are conforming. The height of the structure is currently 24 feet, will be 34%. We have comments from engineering, Board of Health, Water, and Planning and Fire. The new setbacks on Tower Hill Road will be 21.9. On the east side, Melrose, it will be 16.8, south will be 18, 11.8, and on the west is 10.6, and they're both conforming. In terms of findings, the site is adequate in terms of size for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use, the traffic, there's no impact on traffic flow and safety, no impact on neighborhood visual character, views or vistas, there's adequate sewer disposal has been provided, it's adequate utility, and there's no impact on affordable housing. And we have two comments from the public, both in favor or with no comment.
Do we add in, under findings, that the applicant has said that the attic will be open and the basement will be open?
Under findings?
And did you do the lot size?
Yes.
4312? Okay. That's it for findings.
Do we need an ASBIL? Did you say that?
I was wondering that on the height.
Well, because we're so close to the height.
Yeah. I think that's conditions.
Conditions.
Conditions. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So findings? Anything else you can think of, Noreen? So conditions? The one that Tony just brought up?
ASBIL for.
Rich height.
Rich height.
Yeah.
Understood.
Plan, working hours, may need police detail, I'm not sure if you will need, that's up to you anyway, but.
I didn't catch what you just said, Matt.
During construction, police detail may be needed.
Oh.
I, I don't know.
It's up to you.
No requirement on this end.
Got it.
Yeah, so the condition basically says that you'll maintain all work vehicles and equipment and materials on the lot. And so if you're not able to do that, we suggest that you have a police detail so that the roof's not tied up.
Thank you, Ms. Stockman.
I don't think we have to say no other instructions because the stuff like.
No.
But still.
Yeah, we'll still say it though.
It doesn't hurt to say it, I guess.
So no additional shed or anything else placed?
Sleeve the water line.
Oh, yeah, sleeve the water line like, well, all, all.
Yeah.
Four departments.
All comments.
Anybody think of anything else?
Noreen, anything?
Any other conditions?
No.
Okay, we already said aye, but we'll do it again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm opposed, none.
Very good, thanks again.
Thank you. Yay. All right, and now we have Zero Pine, Pine Hollow.
Okay, this is application 82-24, Lisa M. Marshall, 8 Pine Hollow Road, East Falmouth, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240 5.1F1 of the Code of Falmouth to allow temporary storage of a container. Subject property is number zero, well, it's not number zero, but it's unnumbered lot at the corner of Pine Hollow Road and Pitch Pine, lot 26, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. I don't have any note of comments because it's an empty lot, correct?
Yes.
An empty lot, except for one exception. And we have no letters that I have noted.
Is it a buildable lot?
No, because it's, oh, there's a easement, there's a 100-foot wide easement, electric easement that runs through the lot, so it's not suitable for residential purposes.
Okay, come on up, I'll have your name and address, please. Onto the podium. You can pull that mic down.
Pull that down so you can, the audience can.
Lisa Marshall, I live at 411 Sandwich Road.
You live where?
411 Sandwich Road. I live at the top of the street. My mom lives at 8 Pine Hollow Road, that's where I get my mail.
Um, are you, you're supposed to try to tell us why the container should be on an.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so I went to the building department before I even bought the container to ask if I could put it there. Just to be safe, I had my engineer neighbor put it where it was supposed to because I knew there was power lines in the street. I just wanted it to be placed until I was able to move it to Florida. I work in Florida in the winter months and I had a piece of property that I was purchasing down there. So I had this container and I wanted to put it on the property, store my stuff on it, and then move it down to Florida. I told the building department about it, they said yes. So I never even purchased it until I got an approval from the building department. I got the approval and then I got letters and all this stuff happening that I couldn't have it there. So I was, of course, at awe because I hired a crane, bought the thing, and put it on the property, started storing my stuff in there, and now I've got to, well, I'm going to move it to Florida eventually, but now I'm finding the prices are astronomical right now, so it's going to take me a little time.
Okay, I want to start on this, I'm going to start with you, Tony. We'll start with Dick.
What, Nick?
Who's voting, remember?
Nick is voting on this one, sorry.
What's, what's being stored in there now?
It's just clothes in storage, stuff that I'm bringing down to.
Okay.
Stay in it.
All right, that's all.
You all set?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tony.
So you're, you're storing clothes and things like that in.
Yeah, tables and there's furniture in there.
And you're keeping it quite nicely, I mean, it's well painted.
Yeah, I mean, she lives across the street and she's been complaining about the property forever, so we decided to put a garden over there.
So let me, so let me ask that question. It's obviously being used for more than storage. You've got a concrete patio, a roof over it, a garden, you've got temporary electric power you put in, you've got a water meter. Well, there are all the things that might.
Yes.
One might consider somebody is habitating.
Right.
Somewhere on the property.
Right.
So you're telling us that you're not using it other than for storage or are you using it for other than storage?
We do go down there and cook out down there and the kids come down and we play games across the street. We use it as the garden. There is furniture on the porch and we do sit in there. Otherwise, there's not water hooked up to it. There is electric because of the climate control, because of the humidity in it.
What's a climate controlled storage unit?
Yes, yes.
And you say that the building department gave you a permit to put it there?
I didn't, they didn't tell me I needed one. I just asked if I could put a climate controlled storage unit there and that's what it's being used for.
Did anyone give you a cease and desist order to remove it?
I, I don't, is it, I mean, nobody sent me anything. They told me I, they told me that I would have to contact the building department.
So how did you get to, why did you come here? Who told you to come here?
The zoning.
The zoning department did or the building department?
I had a sticker on it. Somebody put a sticker on it and said to call the building department.
All right, so you went, so did you speak with the zoning enforcement agent, Eleanor McKay?
I don't know, there was a lot of people on the phone. When I called, there was a lot of people. I don't know who was talking.
Okay.
So.
So somebody there, I just want to understand why you came, what the genesis was to coming here. So somebody there said, look, you need to get a special permit in order to maintain that. They put a sticker on saying, hey, this is wrong?
Yes.
Come and talk to us.
Yes.
And as a result of that, they said you need to apply for.
A special permit.
Special permit under five point one F, temporary structures. Where is the primary structure? Where is your home on the property? Is there any home there?
No, there is nothing.
So there is no home attached to this temporary structure? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
When did, when did you buy this container, and when did you put it on the lot?
I bought it after, I called the crane operator the second I left this building to tell him to pick it up, and I paid for it to bring it down here from Rhode Island. And he brought it down, and it was last May.
Last May, so May twenty-twenty-four?
Yes. May three.
Twenty-three?
May twenty-three?
Yeah.
Well, we have a provision in the zoning bylaw that says that a temporary structure may be allowed for a max of a year, so you've already used up the year.
Okay, so this is why I'm here, to get.
Well, no, but we can't go beyond a year.
Oh, okay.
So if it's already been there for a year, I think it's possible that we don't have the authority to help you, I don't like to say that, but it looks to me like that may be the case. Is this structure, how is it held to the ground? Is it just dropped in the ground, or is it held by stakes?
Yeah, you just pick it up and move it.
Is it held by stakes?
No.
Is it on a foundation?
No.
All right. So it's been there for over a year, a year and a half, or a year and a quarter, pretty close to a year and a half. And the max is a year under the zoning bylaw, that's section two forty-five point one F for temporary structures, so I have no further questions.
Scott?
And again, I'm just looking at Scott McGann's email, so the unit doesn't have any water supply, it doesn't have any wastewater generation. And there's no habit of.
There's nothing hooked up to it, except.
And, and then to Mr. Duffy's comments, it seems as though we're outside of the purview of our board, and quite honestly, the building department does a great job with enforcement, I was kind of puzzled why this was in front of us at this juncture, but that's okay, hopefully we can get to some resolution here, but. You mentioned that you are moving or getting it ready to go to Florida, what's that timeframe?
I had been gone in Florida and came back to violations. So I had been gone from last year till, uh, May, I believe it was. May, May, the beginning of May. So I had no idea what was going on here while I was gone working, and when I came back, I had violations, and I'm like, what's going on, you know? And they wanted papers saying that it was my property, so my lawyer was in the middle of doing that, I guess, because he had emailed me when I was in Florida, and when I came back, I brought the stuff to the zoning, what they asked for.
Thank you, no further questions.
Well, anyway, you're, you're, you're past your year, you have an accessory dwelling without a primary dwelling, and not that it makes any difference in whether it's accurate or not, but I heard the furniture storage was in the configuration of a living room.
Yeah.
And it was used as such, but I mean, it really is kind of a moot point, because you really can't have it there.
Okay, so.
You, I mean, if you had a piece of property with a, a, a primary dwelling, I mean, it might be a different issue, and of course, your, your, your year clock would start all over, I'm assuming, but I, from what I understand, I don't, I don't think you can have it there anymore, but somebody can correct me.
No, it needs to go.
Okay, so if it was to be moved on a piece of property with a dwelling, it still has to be moved after that again, a year later?
Yes.
Unless you made it into it.
It's just going to kind of disappear.
Unless you made it into a.
All right.
Yeah, an ADU, but I mean, that's not your plan anyway.
So what if I decide to do that? Because it was moving from Florida, from here to Florida on a piece of property down there.
We don't have any jurisdiction in Florida.
No, what I'm saying is, is why couldn't I do what I was going to do in Florida, here?
So, so she could.
And I'll find a different place.
She could move.
To another place.
To another lot.
Yeah.
Well, you would, you would want to check and make sure that you had sufficient setbacks to meet the bylaws and lot coverage, so if you had another piece of property you could move this to, you should check with the building department to make sure it complies.
You mean with a dwelling on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so you'd want to make sure you had enough setback, and you were able to connect to septic or whatever, in which case you, you could use it as a dwelling unit if it complies, but the problem here is that you have a vacant lot, and it doesn't have a primary structure on it, it doesn't have a house on it, so they don't have a way to give you an accessory structure on it.
Okay, so, all right.
You may be able to sell that thing up here.
Yeah.
Because ADUs are a pretty hot item right now.
I put it online, yeah.
You may be able to not spend all the money to travel it all the way to Florida. Seriously, I mean, if you think about it, you may be able to sell it up here.
On the impression from the building department that I could have it there. You know what I mean? And it wasn't being used for that, because I was moving it to Florida.
Also qualifies, qualifies as a shed, because it's under two-hundred square feet.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Qualifies as a shed, it's under two-hundred square feet. Twenty by eight, that's a hundred and sixty square feet.
So I guess, Noreen, it's not supposed to be there in enforcement, so what, what's the guidance that we're giving the applicant here?
Right, so, so she has an enforcement letter from the building department, basically their instructions were that she either needed to get permission from us, or to make alternative arrangements, right? So it made sense for her, where the structure's already placed, to come here and ask for permission.
Okay.
But absent being able to grant permission.
So we are denying her permission to keep the.
We have to both.
So you would, yeah, you would make a determination and.
I think we just say we don't have authority to grant the permit.
Okay.
At the very least, you can put it somewhere else for a year.
Yeah.
A different address.
Off the street?
Well, that would be the handiest.
She didn't look too pumped.
What, what? As a storage unit, or?
Why is it, why wouldn't it be that it does not comply with zoning bylaws? Versus that we don't have the authority? We have the authority if we ever comply with zoning bylaws.
I don't even.
But it doesn't have a primary structure.
So that it does not comply with zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
Well, right now, but it's, we have, the temporary structure and uses that do not conform to the bylaw may be allowed by special permit, but then it goes on to say the maximum is one year, this one up in May of twenty-three, it's.
Sorry.
I believe, I have to look at my records.
Wow.
So help us form the motion properly.
So I, I think if the board feels that it's not.
I feel it needs to go.
Location for the structure.
Motion to deny, isn't that enough?
Correct, so she's asking for permission to have a, a special permit to store, so if you're not going to grant that, you would be denying her request.
I move that we deny the request.
I'll by closing the hearing first.
Oh, yeah.
Do the close.
Excellent. Motion to close, second.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
You're on this, Nick, don't forget. Now we'll make a motion to deny.
Discussion, not necessary.
Close, no, okay.
I don't think so.
Do that motion again for me.
I move that we deny the request, second.
All those in favor of denying?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
And then in findings, I would put that the applicant has admitted that the structure was placed in a lot in May of twenty-three, section twenty-two forty-five point one F allows a temporary structure to be permitted by a special permit for a maximum of one year, one year is run, so we've run out of the bill of authority to approve it.
I think it's probably also of value to perhaps cover that where it's an accessory structure, there's not a primary use on the lot, so.
Fine, that should be in there.
You may as well.
And it's an unbuildable lot anyway, so there's no possibility of a primary structure. You might want to give your phone number if anybody out there wants to buy a phone now.
No, she seriously may be able to sell that.
Absolutely.
I would think, seriously.
You know, there's, there's definitely a demand.
Yeah.
So seriously, like, it's very expensive to move it.
Yeah, that's, I, I would.
So, I mean, do I get to move this tomorrow? I mean, like, I got to call a crane operator, I already tried calling him, you know, to see about having him move this, like, a month ago.
Where do you, where do you, oh, it's moving across the street?
That's the only place I can go now, so I can sell it.
You're not done.
Two bobcats will move that thing.
Okay.
The building inspector said make other arrangements, and that's for her to do.
You know, and I don't, I need a timeframe of, you know.
All of her just questions about moving it and how fast, that all has to go back down to the building commission.
Oh, yeah.
Well, right, so what I would recommend, right, what I would recommend is that the board give her an amount of time within which to manage this, and then for yourself, if you want to keep the, the structure here, wherever you find that you want to move it to, I would just check with the building department first. And confirm that where you're looking to place it works.
Okay.
You know, or you have the option to sell it, or I suppose your other option would be you could potentially find a location in the town that allows storage of such a, you know, structure, I don't know, on like a commercial lot or something, while you're looking to.
Oh, you could afford it.
So you have options.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I would recommend is before you do something, that you confirm with the building department that what you're looking to do works.
Okay.
Would we be within our rights or purview or whatever to allow her sixty days? Is that reasonable?
Um, I would recommend six months.
Yeah, I would give her time.
I think to make an arrangement to be able, first, she's going to have to find a place to move it to, then she's going to have to make arrangements to move it, and given the size of this, it's not something you could do tomorrow.
But aren't we setting a precedent where, 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 where stretching a one-year thing to a year and a half for everybody else? Seems like a little.
Yeah, but you just got the request today.
Not that I want to be.
Right.
Unreasonable, but I honestly, I mean, so that, what we're effectively saying is that everybody that wants to do this, it's a one-year limit, but we're really giving you a year and a half?
No, but I think.
That seems a little extreme.
I, I think where the application was only before you today, you can't retroactively look at her and say, you've had a year to move it, right? Because she.
No, you don't, she had a year to keep it there.
But are we in effect, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Go for it.
Aren't we in effect attempting to enforce the bylaw, which we have no right to do? I mean, it's gone, I mean, it, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this difficult, but I want it to be able to be viable.
Right.
Are we attempting to enforce a bylaw? I mean, we don't have enforcement.
I think all we can do is deny the application in front of us, which we've done, and everything else is under the purview of the building department.
Yes.
You don't think conditioning six months, or anything? Okay. I think we should.
I.
All right, so just understand that the problem for the applicant is, once the decision is filed, enforcement is underway, and so you're creating potentially a financial hardship for somebody, not giving them an opportunity.
We.
Well, let her, I'm sorry.
It's not us, though, isn't it, the building department?
No, no, they have already issued an enforcement letter.
Yeah.
And so she either gets an approval from us, or she gets a denial, but if you don't grant her a period of time, she has no time.
So we have no, I mean, we have no bylaw that allows that.
No, you are allowed, under your conditions.
Yeah.
To give, to grant her an amount of time to make accommodations, I would recommend that you.
I think we should do six months.
Consider a period of time that's fair.
I mean, we were thinking three, but then that's Christmas, and I, I think she should have some time to get it done.
I think that's a little extreme, and it tells everybody that.
You think six is too long?
I, I think that everybody's going to automatically think that their, the year is now a year and a half.
How could they not?
This is the first time we've ever seen a case like this, where you never, they never see another one.
Why don't we just throw it back in the building department's lap and?
For ten years.
Well, so they, they don't have an option to grant somebody relief.
No, they're not going to grant it, they're going to enforce what they want to enforce, it's their deal, deal anyway.
Right.
So why don't we just deny it and shoot it back to?
I think it's a courtesy, we've had a structure in the past where we requested removal, and we granted them six months, so it's a standard that the board's used before.
Yeah, I'm in favor of six, I don't, I, I think six is okay.
Okay, then I would move we put an additional condition of removal in six months.
Are you guys okay with that, or do you want less, or?
I was thinking more of three months, but I'm not going to.
Do you want to do January one? That's like three and a half months, maybe? Or something like that?
I, I, you know, not that I'm trying to be unreasonable, but I think we're, we're six months is, I mean, you're going to see this.
You want January one?
All the one year, three months, I, I, January first, why not?
Want to do January one, is that? No one seconded you, right?
No one seconded me.
So make that motion for us, Mike, and we'll do that one.
I, I, I move we allow the, the structure to stay till, I have it moved by January first, no later. No later than January first, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that? I guess we. Code on a condition.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just say one thing? I do work in Florida in the winter, and I am in Florida at that time, I have to let you know that, because I don't want to get letters and violations and all that.
And get it done before you leave.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I mean, you're going to make arrangements.
That's why I'm asking.
Yep, no, get it done as fast as you can.
Yeah, and I plan to.
I really think you're going to be able to get rid of that thing pretty easy.
Yeah.
I do. It's a hot item right now.
Yeah, we'll see.
You just have to spend some time, you know, it would.
Oh, believe me, I'm on it.
Yep.
That's her.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it out.
All right, where's my agenda? Moving along, minutes. Are we doing all of them, you guys?
Yes, we have four at the minutes for August twenty-nine, September five, and September twelve.
Everybody get to them all?
I have, I'm.
I motion we move all of Ashley's minutes.
To approve, all?
Approve, all.
I'll second.
And you're on this one?
Well, everybody does minutes.
Oh, everyone can do minutes, oh, okay.
Anybody and everybody.
Nick, you get a double shot.
We're all inclusive.
All right, all those in favor of the twenty-nine, August twenty-nine, September five, and September twelve, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Two. Noreen, do you want to take this one? We had a letter.
I didn't bring it.
I didn't bring mine either.
I have mine here, if you need to see it.
Oh, that was the letter that Attorney Moynihan had submitted regarding 40B applications.
Kind of questioning our procedure or something.
Well, right, so typically what happens is the board opens a hearing for a 40B, and at that point in time, the board typically requests slash votes to require a peer engineer. Attorney Moynihan is asserting that it would be more timely for the applicants if we pick the peer engineering ahead, and we have that in place and time for the first hearing. I have mixed thoughts about that. I think, you know, part of the thought process here is that, as the board's aware, you've hit ten percent subsidized housing for the community. And in addition to hitting ten percent, you also have achieved certain safe harbors, where between the achievement of the ten percent and the achievement of the safe harbors allows you control in managing a 40B. allows you control in managing a 40B. That being said, if you have a peer engineer assigned to a project, and for some reason the project doesn't move forward, the applicant has now expended an additional expense for which that may or may not be what the board's intent is. So I still remain an advocate that the board would make this selection at the first hearing. I also think that while they're looking to have a time savings, typically your first hearing is an introduction. You have members of the public that come, and they wanna know, hey, what's the project proposed? They're not necessarily looking to get to the nitty-gritty of the engineering detail at the first meeting, albeit I understand the applicant's intent is to move things along as quickly as possible. My personal perspective for whatever counts, I don't, I do understand that the process takes time. It is somewhat time-consuming to obtain a peer engineer, to get a contract drafted, to get a contract signed, and get the applicant to fund it. All those items do take time. And indeed, I still couldn't confirm that we have to open these 40B hearings within 30 days. So I would still tell you that there's not a way that for us to schedule the hearing and get referrals for you and all the other pieces that we currently do, we could not also get you a peer engineer to magically appear in 30 days for that first night, because we couldn't have a contract in place. By the time we have the contract in place, the peer has to review the material, write you a report that you would hopefully have at least a week ahead of a hearing. So I don't see a way for us to change.
And then...
And we would have to change with every case, too.
Right, but it's still, you know, you're sort of shooting for something that you can't hit.
Can I, clarification here? Now, because we have reached safe harbor under a couple scenarios, we must open the hearing by stating something, I'm not sure what it is, that we have. We could actually deny it. Now, it's only, what you're establishing here is that it's only because we've reached safe harbor. If in fact we hadn't, then having peer engineers in the beginning might work.
Well, so there is the safe harbor element, and that's totally correct. But I would also say to you, if we were not in any safe harbor, for an application to be submitted and to, within 30 days, have a hearing, have a peer engineer who has a contract signed with the town, and then has time to review the material and be here for the first night, is not going to happen. We physically can't comply with that.
Never mind the butters.
But, never mind the butters, but we control when the peer engineer will appear before us.
Yeah.
Correct. I mean, it also depends on their timeline. And they have to have, right, sufficient time to attend the meeting, right? And you have to have sufficient time for that engineer to speak, right? It doesn't do any good to have the person come, and you say to them, hey, by the way, you have five minutes, right?
Now, what about, especially now that we're in safe harbor? I mean, if we were to get this peer engineer early, I mean, we do have a lot more latitude now to, say, change things. So they might have to come back and do it twice under this scenario as well. So I just don't see how we can do this and not end up having this come back and bite us and cost us more money.
Well, I think it was an idea that was intended to be a time savings.
Yeah.
And I do understand that the time for a contract takes what it takes, right? I mean, we reach out to the peer, we ask them for a proposal. We have our town engineering vet the proposal to make sure it includes what the town wants and needs. We then, once that's done, we have to circulate a proposed contract through the town. The town manager signs off, legal signs off, the collector signs off that the butter, that the applicant has funded the peer account so that we can actually engage the person. So all of these pieces take a certain amount of time that we have no control over.
Yeah. I move that we...
So...
Yeah, I, we just stay the same.
You know, I think...
I think we're doing fine, myself.
Well, I mean, I guess the good news is, she's put something out there for us to ponder.
Something to consider, yeah.
To your point, Noreen, it sounds like the timeline is just unattenable. Prior to a second kind of meeting, I'd like to have the peer reviewer, I hate to rush a second meeting and not have a peer review, 'cause then it seems like that meeting doesn't, isn't as substantial as it could be, but... And then, again, safe harbor kind of changes the way we look at all of this. But, you know, even if we were to pre, I don't know how procurement law works, but could you have somebody pre-approved for traffic and wastewater in a scope that is from 10 houses to 300? And I don't know how you do all of that, so...
Hey, the wheels move slow, and reinventing them is...
And then you'd get pre-approvals that you could cut a check for $10,000, I don't know.
I think that's, I'm sorry.
I guess we're kind of a little stuck.
I think it's, I would love to have that work that way, so that everything's ready to go when it needs to go. But, you know, with safe harbor now, you're right. I mean, they can't, if they fund this thing, and we don't know which way these things are gonna go. We have a lot of latitude now. It's not fair to, to the applicant. And we have, I think, at least two now that, I'm not gonna talk about them, at least two now that now come within the scope of, that we've reached safe harbor.
And each case is so different, too.
That's absolutely true.
I mean, sometimes there's 25 people at one talk, sometimes there's no one. And each case is just so different. I mean, I don't see how you put them all in the same mold. You know, I don't know. I'd say we just leave them alone.
I agree.
Leave well enough alone.
Yeah, does it require a vote, do you think?
No.
I, I don't know. I think if you're not looking to make any change to your regulations, I don't know that you need to specifically vote.
Okay.
If you expressed.
Well, at least we're all on the same page.
Consensus was not the change.
Yes, yes. Noreen, you're at bat.
Always.
Actually, we should change it to football season then.
So I haven't spent a lot of time, unfortunately, to provide you with updates, because we've been running around trying to put out fires. But I can update the board. We did have a late request, as you're aware, the senior affordable development at Scranton and Main is looking to have occupancy in the near future. Very excited. All the units there will be tiered affordability for seniors. And I understand that despite all the seniors that will be housed, there are many more, many more, who were not able to be housed through a lottery. So there's still that loss for the town of, you know, seniors who need an affordable place. So the board did grant an override of the height, as you're able to do for a 40B. You granted the height of 38 feet. Upon the certification, there were two roof peaks that are aesthetic in purpose that exceeded that 38 feet by .7 feet. So a couple of inches. However, it also now doesn't specifically comply with your 38 feet. So I issued an administrative approval today for the de minimis change in the height, citing that it is an aesthetic change. So therefore, it's not governed specifically by the town's bylaw. And if you refer to the state rules, which comprehensive permits fall under, they look at changes in height of 10% or more as being a substantial change. So therefore, a height change of a couple of inches, they would not consider to be a substantial change. So based on that, and the hope that the applicant will have a temporary occupancy permit tomorrow, which will aid them with their financing, and they're hoping to move people in in the very near future.
Wow, that's great.
Doesn't that just fall under the architectural detail?
Yes.
Great.
So we'll call that Noreen's Ridge.
No comment, no, no comment, yeah.
Oh, let's see what I think we all said?
Yeah.
Board discussion?
Put that off till the 5th.
No.
Yeah, we will put that off. Board updates?
The 5th is our meeting.
Everything's, we have, we have no more board updates, right?
How are we doing with, I don't know if this is section, how are we doing with the breakfast meeting agenda?
I think people should, if you have anything particular that you wanna have added in, please email us, like ASAP, so that we can add that in, 'cause we will post an agenda. You know, it can be brief, but if there's anything in general people wanna add, and if not, I have a nice list.
Good.
And future agenda items? I think we all said. All right, Mac.
Motion to adjourn.
Go.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, boom.